Order for today, June tenth, two thousand twenty five. And the first item on the agenda will be the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands our nation under God, in the name of the law, of the freedom of justice and of
Thank you. With that, I'd like to call forward Principal Kevin Richmond as this month's recognition is for Vinington High School.
Thank you. All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is Kevin Richmond, Richwood High School. Joining me this evening is Alex Ackerman, who is our acting director of technology for the district. They manage sports through Bosie's. I asked Alex to join me tonight because she's been instrumental in our AI adventures at the high school. So she can provide some of the background knowledge and I can provide some of the day to day stuff. Right, so just making a connection to our school group of plan. Obviously, one of our commitments is academic instruction excellence. We have a lot of things we're doing this year, but one of the things we're focusing on is our artificial intelligence of the classroom. They have a program called SkillStruck, which we're going to get to in a couple of minutes, where we ran a pilot program this year with many of our classes. So we have a bunch of students and teachers that decided to take this journey with us and we're going to talk about it this evening about that journey and what we experienced this year.
In choosing a platform for this adventure, we definitely didn't take anything lightly. At the time of the launch of this, which was this past September, there was only one platform out there that would satisfy the United States data security and privacy law, education law too deep, and that was SkillStruck. However, we really felt after talking to them, they were a known company, they have been in the education business for many years, and their staff and support team was extremely responsive to all of our needs. We really felt confident as we went through the year that we had made the correct choice and we're excited to move forward with them in the upcoming year for year two of our pilot. We have a video about what SkillStruck is and how it works with our students. And teachers can learn and use the power of AI. Chat for Schools has many capabilities, including ways to manage students, sections, and settings. It includes resources such as lesson plans, professional development materials, and our learning studio, and finally, our safe alternative, ChatGPT. Let's jump in to explore our chat and our lessons. In the platform, students are able to explore different lessons like how to interact with AI chat tools, using the chat effectively, for writing prompts, and more. They can view the content within the textbook, or they can view an interactive presentation where they start a course and they interact with it in a more engaging way. After students have gathered their information from the textbook or the interactive presentation, there are quizzes to check for authenticity. Outside of the lessons, students are able to interact with the chat in a safe, controlled environment. They can ask specific questions to help them with their learning. Outside of the chat, we also have a tutor mode where students can interact with tutors based on specific subjects or specialized tutors that were created by their teacher. Teachers can create these specialized tutors in our learning studio where they'll enter specific content or standards if they want the tutor to help students. Let's now let's check out Learning Studio where this specialized tutor was created. Teachers can create a variety of engaging materials within our learning studio, but let's check out the tutor creator that you just saw from a student perspective. Teachers can create new tutors or edit existing tutors if they've created. Let's check out my storyteller that you just saw from a student perspective. Teachers can simply fill out a form with topic and learning materials, characters, and grade levels, and they can also edit anything the tutor creator generates. Outside of Learning Studio, we have four resources for teachers, including lesson plans and professional development materials. Our lesson plans are fifty minute guides for teachers to use with students. They include supplemental materials, formal activities, class activities, and time on the tool. We also have professional seller guides in a train the trainer model that follows similar flow to those second class that you just saw. Let's check out the management tools, starting with managing students. You can log and unlock the chat for a specific student or for your section as a whole. You can also see the latest sentiment of your students and view the full chat history for them, including anything that was split. Teachers can manage the different sections as well, like assign different reading levels to their groups of students. And finally, administrators have access to our settings where they can add words and phrases that they don't want the chat to interact with. Thanks for learning a little bit more about Chat for Schools by SkillStruck. Two of the biggest things that we have really utilized through this program, the tutors are definitely one of them. Our teachers have enjoyed creating quite a few tutors that their students use in class to help them not only catch up on material, but also to learn new material. And then also the guardrails and guides that our teachers can utilize to help them use the program effectively for learning and ensure students are staying within certain bounds. We've really found that those things are essential to our use of this particular platform. When we began our pilot, we started actually last summer with our group of pilot teachers. And one of our biggest achievements of the, I believe it was four days that we had with them, was the creation of these classroom guides for AI. And the group created these, they were very thoughtful around it. We didn't want to use the traditional colors of red, green, and yellow because we didn't want to say that anything was specifically bad or good. They put a lot of thought into how this looks and how teachers can use it in their classrooms to indicate some of those guardrails in person as to what kids can do on assignments and what those things mean. We have grown our pilot from our eight original teachers up to twenty five. This past year, there were three hundred nine total chats, nine hundred ninety five total prompts. You can see some other numbers up there as well. We really pushed utilization with our teachers. We had weekly check-ins from our ed tech coach from Affleck on the B T Bosie side of things. We met bi-monthly with all of the pilot members and we helped them utilize the platform more effectively. We answered questions and we crowdsourced ways to push the usage and really make sure that it was benefiting our students and the goals of the H S.
Just want to clarify real quick the difference between a chat and a prompt. So you can see with two hundred eighty-three students that signed into the program this year. So the chats are chats that were created by a teacher for them to interact in. The prompts is having kind of the interaction within the chat. Alright, so we created, there was a thousand chats that were created within that, over eight thousand times they interacted with the computer. Just to give you some context, so top row is what the teachers did with the AI program and the bottom row is what our students used. So I just want to give you a couple of samples on what exactly we did with the program. And it's important that we just, we just got over the diagram to the right, as you'll see in a second as I show some student examples. The teacher designates what the student can and cannot do during those lessons. So every time there's a lesson, helping SkillStruck, this diagram is put on the board for the students to know which part they're using it for. Whether again, we have no AI and this is just a straight normal lesson, or whether we're going to use it to organize brainstorm, etc. So the first one I'll show you is from English eleven class, and that was the prompt. So as for topics that relate to your favorite theme, characters, or personal interest, and I'll take you through where they edit and then they ultimately actually debate with AI. So the first thing that the teacher asked him to do was to go up with some ideas, and I'm just the brainstorming, so you can see the anything in gray is AI, anything in white is the student. So you can see that the AI gave him eight different options of things that they could talk about within that context. And then the individual students, they elaborate more on the eighth idea, what is there to argue about it because they were going for debate. And as you can see, that was a brainstorming idea. And then here was how can I make this argument stronger? And so then at that point, obviously, the AI computer then spit out that argument to them, had it refined to make it better. And then this one, I think, is pretty cool. So the prompt was debate with me. And so you can see that the AI program is having a full debate with the student on argument about the Great Gatsby. So if you just think about, just in terms of class of twenty-five students and trying to get individual attention, here we are where every single student is actually one-on-one with the teaching device, really trying to extend those lessons. Another top, another student sample I'm going to show you today is in one of our Spanish two classes. And so what this speaker teacher does is for the speaking and writing part, I'm just going to show you the writing example here, but they actually asked the students to have a full conversation with the chatbot in Spanish. So the teacher gave a bunch of sirs they could pick from, and this one, they said, we practiced there too. So in there too, we explained what's going on, and then obviously, the individual starts writing to the AI bot, and then the AI bot writes back in Spanish to them. And I just put a clip here, but this just goes on and on for the students to interact. Especially when we have a language class, often our students, when there's interacting with each other, it's limited to what that other student is aware of or knows. Obviously, we want a lot of chats with the head teacher, but again, class twenty-five often difficult. So here, we're getting one-on-one interactions with the AI bot on, within the language. And I know in the beginning, especially our language teacher is very skeptical of the program, but they actually said it goes spot on in terms of the language acquisition and what it was producing. Let me see if this video works. So this is the video that we created, which has a teacher and I think three students that just talk about how their year went with the AI program. The other thing that I will say is in terms of us and next steps, we're going to continue the pilot into next year. We're actually going to be expanding to more teachers within the building who want to participate, which will lead to more students. Personally, I'd love it if we get to the point that every teacher has access, every class has access to it. But a lot of that also depends on the comfort level of the staff member. So we were lucky enough that we had a variety of teachers who were really gung ho about diving in and learning more about it and already kind of had a computer background. And then we actually had two teachers that really, technology was not their thing, and they really wanted to drive, you know, dive in just because of that. So the goal is just to continue, continue thinking about what else we can do with this, what other prompts can put in with students. You know, as we start to prepare kids for secondary or for college, we're finding a lot of universities are using AI. But the key to AI is really not to replace your work, but to enhance your work. So that's really what we spent a lot of time this year with our students on, is really making sure that those prompts, the prompt writing was a huge component of that. We're hopeful that when they get to the college level, this is not going to be anything new to them, and they're going to truly understand how they can enhance the writing and not replace it.
Do the teachers see a record of what every kid is interacting, you know, and all the, so they get that feedback right away or something they print out or how's that work?
So the teacher has the ability to go and actually see what they're doing right then and there. If you're further, ChatGPT is kind of the same with our concept within the chat there. The difference, as I said in the video, is that we actually have words in there that it's not allowed to search for, and certain sites it can't search for. So we have more guidance over it to make sure that kind of like our, within our firewall that we have for our computers, for our students, to not be able to get to certain sites. So there's much more oversight, the teacher can go and look at it immediately. In addition, there's a feature that if a student does search for something that's inappropriate, an alert is immediately sent to the teacher to let them know that that's what they're searching for.
Kevin, I know.
Twelve seconds left before it's done.
I know years ago, when we first started the IB program, there was some concern about plagiarism and quality of work, oh, it should enhance it. We would use products, I just turned it in, that would check to see the degree to which it was really authentic work versus also where that colleges now will have students submit your lab report via those same mechanisms. Because they're checking to see to what degree would they have support, support that working in one shared college or whatever. Have we, what's your vision in terms of, what's the feedback you got from teachers in terms of how this really has enhanced coloring in the classroom, you know, versus doing the work for the student?
Yeah, so a lot of the, the view I've got is really sort of the brainstorming piece. So right now, if you ask a student, hey, brainstorm a couple of topics, sometimes you get some very low level, okay, this is kind of what they give out. They're able to Google, type a couple of things in, they kind of, but the teachers, so one thing I didn't mention, which I should, is that we made sure that any teacher that was doing the pilot at least had one section that did not have the AI pilot attached to it, so we could look at the feedback for that. Every single teacher said that the brainstorming, the quality of work was far superior in the AI classes because they had somebody giving a feed, you know, the tech giving feedback to the student instantly. And so even the brainstorming, as you saw when we put it in there for the Great Gatsby, there were eight different, you know, pretty detailed topics that the students could pick from, where if they were just doing that at Google, again, we're very limited by kind of what we put in. So we definitely, the teachers have said that the quality of work is definitely enhanced. I know we were one of the first people in the area to really start to look at this. We did actually look at what IB had put out, IB had put out some guidance very early on about AI, which they very much encouraged it. They took kind of the same stand what we did, which was, it's here, let's teach our students how to properly use it instead of just saying, absolutely not. And so like I said, you know, Dr. Thompson, back to your question, the teacher said that the work quality coming out of the AI groups was far superior than the work quality of individuals who did not have that. Dr. Johnson, you may just need to turn the volume up a little bit, it's quite quiet.
I told this student, use interactive AI operation for the IB exam. They would receive AI feedback as one of several forms of feedback in terms of numbers related to the rubric as well as like explanation of what they're, you know, what they're achieving and what they can improve. I really liked having AI feedback as one of, one more, one additional component to, for students to receive feedback on. I like that it's different. I like that it's, that it provides like a different type of potential objective evaluation of student writing.
I think AI feedback can be really helpful when you don't have a teacher there to guide you through the writing process. Like if you're practicing writing on your own, or you just want to brush up your writing with some grammar, sentence structure tips.
And the only way this can, I feel, use your voice is if students or teachers are using this responsibly and having AI do all of it for them and not bouncing out, they're just there hearing responses.
I think AI feedback would be really helpful when it just used a rubric form, a test rubric, and for like IB exams and gave the score that we would perceive that IB had written in. The AI was, I guess, engineered so that it actually corresponded to the grades that IB would have given us, which was really helpful because it was unreasonable for our teacher to have graded all of our papers, considering how much practice we were doing. But just getting that quick grade and seeing where it was on the work stream was really helpful.
So the last thing that the com was talking about was you have the ability to upload rubrics into the system and then upload your writing into it, and then it actually will analyze based on the rubric you put in there. So in terms of the IB getting ready for the IAs, that was something that teacher particularly was using to get that instant feedback based on the rubric, not just based on, you know, some random ideology, really based on what the IB program was asking for specifically for that task. Any questions you may have for us?
You mentioned that originally there was eight teachers that started with the pilot, and I probably, I said, English eleven teacher and Spanish teacher were the other teachers that participated across like the school, high school level.
Yep, so we tried to pick one teacher from every content area. Unfortunately, there was some, it was one content that no one wanted to participate. Other than that, we had it from every single content area, and that wasn't imperative for us to see that it worked everywhere, not just in English or social studies, which typically where you're seeing used. So that's why even the foreign language was huge for us to get that involved because that was one of the groups that was most wary on whether this was going to work or not.
Yeah. And does SkillStruck provide instruction? Whose job is it for the student to get information on how to use AI?
Yes.
Should provide yet or the program?
So what we did early, when we went over the summer was between Alex and Kyle. They created lessons with the teachers on how to use AI with the kids. So before they even got into using it for English classes, debates, or whatnot, they had to spend multiple lessons with the kids talking about what the program is. As you saw, the SkillStruck program does provide lessons, but we really tried to tailor them more towards our students. A lot of lessons upfront of prompt writing. The prompt writing is really the end-all be-all when it comes to the AI. A lot of it will recognize that it's always good as what you put into it. And so we really spent a lot of time with those students, making sure they understood that what words they put in matter, and that's going to dictate the response you get back from the program.
I noticed the one student was talking about how it was important to use it responsibly.
Yeah.
Are there, what is in place for, I'm trying to have a phrase for this, for the teachers to be able to like, you know, if like, was like, I guess, where's like the filter to be able, the oversight to know how, if it is being used responsibly and the monitoring of that?
Yes, so one of the reasons we picked SkillStruck is because of the monitoring system with it. So other work we looked at were, we really just didn't feel that they were as solid as this one was, so the teacher has access to see, have see everything. So let's just say, if I were to say, if students, you know, use AI, create a whole paper and they copy and paste, the teacher would see clearly everything that a copy and paste, the, the teacher would see clearly everything that they did in the system. So we haven't had issues with SkillStruck because of how much it monitors. The issues we've had in the building have been a student using a different platform, copying and pasting. And so we've spent, as, as far as the staff in the building, we've talked about different, different ways to try to determine whether or not a student may have plagiarized something or not. There were a couple of universities where professors were actually using, there are a bunch of, Dr. Thompson, I'm turning, there's a bunch of other programs out there checking C zero that swear that they can tell whether it's an AI or not. A couple of college professors actually have been let go from their universities because they used those programs and found the programs were wrong. The cool thing about AI, which I'm saying it's a cool thing as a principle, I shouldn't say that, you could literally write an AI, create this so you can't have it detected by AI. So these programs don't work, all right? What I've said to the teachers and, and the, the best thing that I have found, whether it's been on the internet, talking to colleagues, talking to universities, is in the beginning of school year, have your students write something with pen and paper. Full on that. And as the year goes on, you'll start to see, is that quality of work even remotely close or is it completely different? Again, you can use these, these various tools. They'll tell you, you know, eighty percent probably that it's AI, twenty percent it is or isn't. My conversations with the staff has been if you're going to use one of those, that is a starting point, that is not an end point. So if you're going to use it and says, hey, a hundred percent of this was replicated by AI, that's a talking point to have with the student. We're not going to sit there and assume that that is end all and everything as these college professors have done and found that they were, weren't accurate. So we're not having as much honesty as I thought we're going to, but I think part of that is that we're actually letting students use it and we're saying, use it, right? But let's teach how to use it appropriately.
Has it changed the relationship between the kids and the students or are there classes where they're just on their computers the whole time or is there still, I don't know, is there a way to make sure there's a balance and still of the relationships in the class?
Absolutely. So I don't think it has worked without the relationships upfront. Because there has to be some trust between the students and the teachers in the room. None of the the classes that use the AI have used it from bell to bell. It's a piece of the instruction. So it's not replacing instruction. So again, instead of, you know, saying, hey, go search on Google to find topics, which they were typically doing previously, or, or talk with your neighbor about, you know, debate topics. So instead of that, they're just going in for that short period of time. I don't think we've any teachers that are using it completely bell to bell. Every teacher is using it. It is, again, is strategically trying to implant, input it into part lessons to enhance it, not take away from the general classroom.
Thank you.
Yeah.
When you asked that question, I immediately thought about success, like feeling successful and having to use some of the AI tools myself for writing reasons. When your quality improves because you utilize that tool, you feel better and so I don't have to think that that's supported the relationship in the classroom.
Yeah, absolutely. Especially with students that are, a lot of times you hear from, sure it's all grade levels with high school, I don't know where to start. I hear that all the time. I'm not really sure where to start. Where, where do I go? This is the perfect way to start. And you literally can write, I'm going to start a project. I mean, the promise that we, we've been trying to teach the students is to get them past that blockage of, I really don't know what to do next. I'm not really sure where to go. This allows them to do that.
And I, I was talking with Jennifer about this one day and back when we were working more closely together in elementary and reading, we did some professional development around mentor texts. And if you want to write, read this book and have, I mean, emulate elements of that particular author in your own writing, it kind of takes on that feel when you say, you know, if you take this and make it become more professional or more kinder or, or someone who's like, okay, that has style, right? That has style in writing. So I think that's another benefit that I'm sure will come for this. I want, want to thank Kevin and Alex for coming tonight and sharing this. It was a bit strategic on my, my part, Kevin offered to do this, they're doing it, but we're going to do some professional development administrators at the end of June on AI so that they can become understanding of what the tools are that are available for, for the faculty of students. And then next fall, our keynote speaker is going to be kind of, he was going to be comfortable with it and down to secure that. So, and the tech managers are going to be supporting teachers, including through their technology, giving the work this year as a, as a central focus.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda will be the presentation of two Patriot Pride Awards. We'll turn it over to the superintendent to be the emcee for this far meeting.
Hi. So I would like to invite up Denise.
Denise Salsender. And I also want to recognize, maybe Eric who made this recommendation, because she has the privilege of seeing Denise's work each and every day. And so I just want to leave this alone. I have to totally embarrass her here. But presenting this to you tonight for your being a champion for homeless families and students, offering hope, stability, compassion, and unwavering support in their time creates me. And I can say with a little over, but the last time I looked at the data was around three hundred and fifty students right now in our district homeless and most families. Unfortunately, that number continues to grow. You have been an incredible asset for this district of homeless families. And our second, oh, I can't believe it's June and we're going to have to soon be saying goodbye to Ms. Maria Masabaku, who has been thoughtfully reflective as a student board member this past year. And so can we give her a for you? I think four nights out of five, sitting on stage, receiving a congratulations and giving you a big hug because she has made just a tremendous effort in this board funding each time and communicating with you to be here. But I think I most appreciated Maria's support outside the boardroom and being a well advocate for students. She came to me last year. At the time, I became person more supportive student council saying, the job is getting bigger. We need to grow that program. And for her advocacy, we now have a junior, especially sophomore group and should be seen with that group discussion. I mean, we expect big things out of you, I understand. I was just talking before.
Be your right thing.
Making the earth move on to fantastic place to have a foundation for Tobi Mon has a lot to be worked on.
Before we move on to the next thing, because I don't want to forget this, and it's very, very important, just one recognition, sort of as a late pad, wanted to recognize Shawte Middleton for the successful completion of her degree, Master of Public Administration at Pennsyl University. Tremendous undertaking and it's a great program. And so congratulations and we're very proud of you.
Now, I get the privilege of presenting with this very senior side here with a Level Two Board Excellence Award. At this level, he has earned this certificate and I'll get back to you. And congratulations. He has a fantastic president and works very hard before us and does a lot. So we're very grateful to him.
Thank you. I appreciate the compliment. No picture necessary. On to the first public comment portion of the meeting. Does anyone want to come up and speak? That was easy. So move on to item five A, approval of the minutes for the work session and regular meeting of May sixth, two thousand twenty five. We'll also throw in five B, which would be the minutes from the special meeting of May twenty first, two thousand twenty five. I have a motion to approve and accept both sets of minutes. By Eliza, seconded by Carrie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And it brings us to the financial report for the month of April two thousand and twenty five. Are there any questions or comments on the financial report for this month? Moving right along to the second read of policy sixty five fifty one, Family and Medical Leave Act. So we saw this for the first time at the meeting that we had a month ago, and this would be slated to come up for third read and adoption at the meeting to be held next month, most likely July fifteen. Any questions or comments on sixty five fifty one?
I just have a comment and it's a phrase. It was a very, a lot of editing in that, that policy. And as we know, our policy committee is always acting in the best interest of our students. And in this particular case, it's policy six five five one. This is acting in the best interest of our employees and our staff, looking at their leave time, information on personal availability, leave time, all kinds of things, medical leave, military leave, you name it. So I view it, I looked at it, I said, this is a good thing. Our staff is sort of an incentive to come to being, to, we're going to take good care of you. So it's, it's a job well done.
Thank you. I won't take credit for it because a lot of it came on high from the policy service that we use, just because of changes in the associated regulations. But yes, definitely these add a lot of value to policies. So anything else on sixty five fifty one? Moving on to special reports, item eight A, this is the first read of adopt, first read and adoption tonight. So we'll do this very, very differently because of the need to have this in place prior to the first meeting in the two thousand twenty five, twenty six cycle. So policy twelve ten refers to the education of us, or not education, the election of us as the members of Board of Education, the nomination process, the election process. And as you know, now it has been mandated by the state that we have a student board member, but nothing really new for us because we've had that in place forever. So we've had to amend the policy as a result of the law being changed on the state level. And so like I said before, we need to have this adopted tonight. So we're ready to go, although we will have a person in place this fall. And it's not a change to what we do. Any questions on the edits to policy twelve ten?
Stephen, if I could just add, so I'll, I'll forget to stick the, my heart donation via July fifteenth for meeting to have a discussion item on the agenda to talk about the student board members construct in terms of who might serve in that role and provides some of the future of the board consider the one who should get that.
Sounds good. And I know one of the recent onboard newspapers sent by NISBA had a very nice article about the integration of a student board member. That's more really for the boards that don't already have this in place. But certainly, I think some things for us to think about as far as how to make the person feel more integrated into the process and we'd like them to have a more substantive role and of course, clarifying the process so there's some standardization on who it is that's going to get back here every year to make sure that we're doing it in a way that's fair and consistent. So stay tuned more than to come here in, in July. Next up, the presentation on the Contract for Excellence. We'll turn this over to Dr. Thompson and Dr. Dove. This will be followed immediately by mandatory public hearing on the Contract for Excellence.
Oh, Jennifer, as walking up to the podium, I'll just sit here and just set the context for this. This typically occurs embedded in our budget presentation when we have the budget hearing in early May. The reason for the lateness is that the state did not give us our allocation until after that time frame. It's not new money. This is money we're already receiving as part of Foundation Aid. The state put this in twenty twelve process in place where they went to certain districts as a way of trying to say, we're going to give you dedicated money to support you in different areas such as reconstructing school, reducing teacher class size, coaching of teachers and so on. And at that time, we put a, we just kind of named programs that would be part of this. As time has gone on, we typically end up leaving the same people in unless they, they retire or leave us and just kind of, as their salaries grow, pull off pieces and put it in the rest of the Foundation Aid. So it's nothing like, oh, this is seven million dollars that we can do something new with. Unfortunately, it's part of that Foundation Aid already. So Jennifer, want to take it from here?
So for the upcoming school year, you can see the allocation that was set aside at the portion of Foundation Aid, and it's supporting these four goals, increasing time on task for students, reducing class size, improving teacher principal quality, and addressing middle school, high school needs. So again, one example of those middle school, high school needs, doing, we have the Pats program where we have the ninth and tenth grade program where it's a smaller school within a school to help support specific students who find that tour better. Reducing class size, you know, grades K through three, keeping class size down, hoping that that would support students. So as Dr. Thompson stated back in two thousand twelve, the state put Contract for Excellence in place, which again is simply giving school districts some parameters around how to use a portion of the Foundation Aid. Last year was the first year of significantly increasing the aid that was, needs to be set aside for these areas. And so the state is phasing in this allocation over several years. And so we have a phase in plan for how are we, what are we adding to those four areas and how are we, we're basically adding in benefits each year so that we can continue the work that we're doing and not changing. So this just shows the allocation. So again, the arrow is pointing to what's been approved for next year. And then you can see what's approved for the following year and then the year after that. So it's slight increase each year. It's interesting that I did, due to the calculation, the percent increase of this money doesn't necessarily match the percent of increase in Foundation Aid. So it appears like, oh, you're getting more money, right? If our Foundation Aid increased at a minimum of two percent, it's likely it's increased something more than two percent from year to year. So really what it's saying to us is you better make sure you're using this, these monies for these dedicated purposes. Not every school district has Contract for Excellence. It was only schools at the time that were both underfunded and there's student performance, they had performance groups that were funding performance. So they were saying kind of like, here's an intervention for this. So it appears to be helpful. Fortunately, we have enough programs. When it's not helpful is when they say you can't supplant, we have to create something new. That means something has to go away because we don't have, it's not increased in the total amount of money to the district. It can be a little challenging. And so multiple positions were funded by stimulus funding that gave us an extra boost. And so now many of those positions are allocated under Contract for Excellence. So again, it's not supplanting what we already had in the general fund. It's supporting that. So the explanation of those four areas, how we're meeting the regulations and what we're allocating that money towards are, is all found on the webpage. And it needs to be there for thirty days before, so it'll be there from June sixth to July seventh. Public comment, there's a link there, it's on the webpage to a Google form where the public can make comments around the use, the allocation of these funds for those four areas. So again, that'll be open for thirty days, which is a regulation to allow for public comment and input on how we're allocating the money. This is what the form looks like. Any questions?
Could you go back to the first slide where we were talking about the, how you're going to use the funding? I just had a question.
My clicker will work with me. I'm sure that, yeah.
It wants to do it.
Right there.
Is, is student tutoring, providing tutorials for students in the plant? I know we don't pay teachers to do tutoring, but sure, our online programs, are we looking at, sure expanding that?
So we do have a lot of tutoring opportunities built in to support students in our district. The funds for Contract for Excellence aren't funding tutoring specifically, but we do have our grant monies allocated. And like at the high school, we have an online tutor.com program through Gear Up. So we have a variety of opportunities for students. The tutor.com is a live person who can help them at any time. And if students want to submit a paper, they can get feedback on it. We have BU tutors. We have our own internal tutors. At the middle school, we're working on a partnership with BU with their literacy program. So students working on their masters with their doctorates in literacy are coming over and working with our sixth graders and some eighth graders. So we have a variety of different tutoring opportunities in the district.
Dr. Penn, I would say though, that's a traditional kind of tutoring, I need help a moment. The increased time on task does support our interventionists. We're working in small groups of students. So they're, they're the ones who are like, are reading. Teachers are not interventionists, are often named in that increasing time on task. I think we also have some challenge admission on teachers in that, that piece. And improving teacher principal quality as well.
I only mention this because you know this, and the latest research that's been published, it's all over the country, the greatest advancement, the greatest intervention for students to improve K through twelve academic achievement is tutoring. That's it. And it's hot, not just, not just tutoring, but how are you doing it? What programs are you using? Is it in person? Is it online? Is it hybrid model? That kind of thing. I only bring it up because it's, tutoring is really big now.
Yeah, both, I think both models. Yeah. I think I go along with some of the good tier one versus instruction. Thank you. Class of teacher.
Do we have much public feedback or?
Last year, we had one response.
Okay.
But we had a response.
Good, thank you. With that, we'll proceed to the public hearing of the Contract for Excellence. Would anyone like to speak? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move on to a presentation. Back to Dr. Dove, an overview of summer program.
So we have a handout, a beautiful handout from
So, we have a handout, a beautiful handout from Yard that highlights summer learning opportunities for our students. The athletic camps open for ages eight through 12, allowing students to try out all different types of athletics and sports. Last year, we had 152 students involved. Well, and so far this year, we have just about that same number signed up. Registrations are still open, still ongoing, but, so again, that's across the district. The fine arts, we have happening a variety of different fine arts camps, theater camps, music camps at the middle school and high school buildings, and also individual music lessons. And again, signups are still in place, so a lot of parents and families haven't signed up yet, but to date, we have 35 students that are signed up. We have Go Green and STEAM, which are math and science programs at BU and from Community College. And so far, we have 49 students signed up for that. And again, that's targeting our fifth and sixth grade students as well as some high school students. Imagination Adventure, that's our summer STEM programs for elementary students. We have three sites at Roosevelt, MacArthur, and Horst Mann, thank you. And so far, we have 432 students registered. So very nice turnout, and again, working on that. And then at East and West Middle School, because of the capital projects happening in the buildings, the, both middle school programs will be happening here at the Columbus Building. So to date, we have six, about 60 students signed up for each building. And again, just the principals are reaching out, calling families, and really encouraging that attendance.
But they maybe see the letter stating that they were failing, they weren't being successful into more subject areas, and that they needed to come to the, to the summer school for middle school. That's going to be a line academics. But the, but the other programs are allowed to, you know, for students to join it. And transportation is provided.
Is there sign up for some areas more than others? Or is it kind of equal across the elementary school or across the city?
So, like, MacArthur was about 140, the Mann site 210, Roosevelt site 116. So again, numbers still coming in, but pretty good number for all three sites. And again, that's two buildings combining for one site, two other buildings combining, the buildings combining to a site.
We do allow for, because the summer program that the city offers, and so, summer fund. So we allow for, your kids can start with us and finish the day with the summer fund program, or some kids just want to go to the summer fund program. I don't know what those numbers are.
Two other programs that are on the flyer, or I guess they're mentioned actually in the bottom, the summer classes. So we have virtual summer school offered at PHS with our teachers who are supporting students in credit recovery. And then we also have the opportunity for our students to participate in the regional summer school here at Roses.
I was, I'm just mentioning to ask Jennifer, I know, I think we had a conversation with BTOs, the vast majority of students taking summer school in the high school over the summer are those who want to obtain credit and they've taken that course or what. They do offer a couple of credit classes. I want to say it's economics, and also there's a health class that they offer because some students want to graduate at the end of their junior year, and those are typically classes that are offered their senior year, so they can, they can do that if they don't have time as well, don't have, have not been successful in it.
Jennifer, this is a wonderful balance of learning opportunities. The one at the very top, I just want to comment that the athletic department should be highly commended and the work that superintendent's done. There are a number of camps. I know the coaches are very excited about the training these kids from grades, you know, grades kindergarten up to sixth grade. It's going to help our modified JV and varsity teams farther down the line by these programs. We have, in all sports, in all sports across the board, so it's really a good thing. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Next up is the presentation on examining the elementary attendance zones. Turn it over to Stephen.
Thank you. Okay, so elementary attendance zones, what does that mean in English? And we know we have seven elementary schools, and depending on where you live within the catchment area of the Big Bend City School District, your address dictates which elementary school, school we go to. This is an image of our elementary school zones. The large red line in the middle is dividing the city into two halves. On the left-hand side, all those students living in that area currently go to West Middle School. On the right-hand side, they currently go to East Middle School. It's kind of hard, I appreciate, from seeing, can't, can't wait to see, maybe I'll die there. The area of that's kind of purplish, purpurish, all the way to the left is Thomas Jefferson. That beige area towards the center is Horst Mann going across Main Street. The blue is Woodrow Wilson. And then continuing over clockwise, the yellow is Theodore Roosevelt. The green area is Calvin Coolidge. And then the purple area is Franklin. And then that lighter blue that is Center City, where we are currently situated all the way across the river, is MacArthur Elementary School. And the last time that, in asking several questions, I'm looking at the records, that an elementary school attendance zones were looked at was when Christopher Columbus School, the school we're sitting right now, closed, and those students had to then be reallocated. And as you can see, those students were reallocated over to MacArthur Elementary School. So why look at this now? Well, we are about to start construction a year and a half from now, and actually probably start the construction a year from now, I should say, of Theodore Roosevelt Elementary School. And during the time of construction, what's going to be happening is the Roosevelt Elementary students are going to be leaving Roosevelt and going to be occupying spaces throughout the other elementary schools. So as we look at the catchment area of Roosevelt, it's timely to look at, should that remain the catchment area of students that go back into that building? Is there an opportunity to redistribute or look at where students are currently situated? Situated to provide some equity across the district? That was something that came out the last time we looked at enrollment numbers. Now, several years ago, again, can't believe this is three years ago, we looked at enrollment numbers. We had an enrollment study in the district. And what this slide is showing you is that on the left, in the green shaded area, those are the numbers that were projected to be the enrollment in the fall of 2026. So a whole year from now for each of the buildings. If you look just to the right, you'll see what the enrollment was middle of the year. It's kind of a good number, it's not high at the beginning of the year or low at the end of the year. And if you compare those numbers, you will see that they are very, very close. Some several, some several students below, some several students above, but, but again, very close. And overall total, 27 students less than was predicted from that enrollment study. Now that enrolled, those enrollment numbers were predicted based on the predicted kindergarten enrollment. So looking at the census data, how many students are going to be coming into the school district? That's what that was based on. The second way the vet enrollment study looked at our students was to look at the mid-range numbers in terms of how many students were in each building in 2021, all the way and continue that projection through 2026 based on six years of enrollments. Like, what were the enrollment trends? Those numbers are on the yellow at the bottom. That enrollment study was a little bit lower. That predicted a total number of 2,201 students. And then you can kind of see how many students would be projected across each grade level. So when we look at the data today, I think, again, it kind of speaks to the fact that our numbers are, in terms of where individuals living across the city are shifting. And again, we're encouraging the board to engage in this conversation around, are we distributing our students now equitably across the district? Does it make sense to have students at MacArthur, or sitting here in Center City, for example, travel across a river to go to MacArthur? Is there another location where they might be able to attend and be more? So, some objectives for evaluating the elementary attendance zones. And these are just things that we, as a board, have mentioned. These are also things that came out the last time we looked at enrollment. You know, can we rebalance enrollment across our elementary schools? If we look at sections that may have smaller numbers in each class versus other classes, should that be dependent on the school that you go to? If I go to an elementary school, this elementary school may have class sizes that are low by five or six students versus, you know, another building. In other words, they may have 12 or 13 in the class, another building may have 17 or 18 students in the class. Should that be dependent on where I live? The objective would still be to maintain smaller class sizes, you know, 16 to 18. That Jennifer, Dr. Dove just mentioned, you know, the Contract for Excellence, the state identifies a small class size as being 18. So in that, that range, you're supposed to be adding sections so that there's a, you know, at the highest level, 18. And as I said, we try to maintain 16 to 18 across our classes. And so, could it create equitable class sizes so we don't have that discrepancy? You know, often, when we look at the elementary, we do study this each month. It's a chart that out of Dr. Dove's office she maintains. Because it's important each year as we look at sections of teachers at the elementary level to see if we need to maintain the same number of teachers, third grade teachers, fourth grade teachers, and so on, in the building. And when we do that, sometimes we have, we have bunks, right? We have three sections of kindergarten, three sections of first, and then secondary. They just happen to be a larger number of students, and that has four sections. And maybe the next one has three, and that teacher kind of can travel with that grade level. So that happens kind of organically. But what I'm talking about is, you know, some buildings may only have two sections of teachers, and other buildings may have four sections of teachers. How can we create some, create some equity? Also, when you look at our buildings, there are some spaces that have potential for revenue upstreams. When students here at Columbus first moved out, I believe there was a post office downstairs, and I remember hearing conversations around, boy, what else can we do with that building? Before they made it, turned it into central office around 2,000 or late 1900s, 1990s, 1900s, if I don't know. I don't know big with history that well, late 1990s. But when they were having conversations there, they were thinking about who to make the civilian childhood center, right? Who to make them redesign the building and have all of our pre-kindergarten and all our parent education programs here and so on. They went to that central office and using the empty space on the first and second floor as a revenue stream for bringing in BTOSs. So there are those opportunities out there. It's hard to do when you have one or two classrooms in one building and one or two classrooms in another building, and three or four in another building to rent those single classrooms. But is there a way to look at the strategic way to allow for additional space? Again, not, not having a school still function as an elementary building, but is there a way to do this, the other consideration? Of course, work to preserve our neighborhood schools. This is a value set that we've heard from our community. Continue to do that. So we're not saying that that's not going to be, so when we go back, if we go back for a moment to these attendance zones, we're not talking about taking everybody in the green and sending them to blue school. And that would not be keeping a neighborhood school, right? Taking students that live near Calvin Coolidge and moving them to another, another. But it's the boundaries, it's those lines, how could they shift and more, in a way that might be able to realize some other, some other solutions. And then, of course, create more efficient transportation runs. I think this is now the time to just mention that we are engaging in BTOSs, a transportation study, that's looking at our transportation runs for special education students and homeless students across the region to see if there's some way in which we can centralize that or regionalize that. That would off-ward some buses that we're currently using for the purposes of our student, and how could that support our students differently? So it's kind of nice that that's, that's happening at the same time. But are there more efficient transportation runs that could happen for the study? So, you know, what are the most important things that we should be considering when reviewing where elementary students attend school? That's kind of the starting question, right? Some of the things that came up the last time we looked at this again, there should be kind of a set of standards, right? How do we, how do we look at this? Right now, we have a set of standards when a building goes over capacity. And we have a classroom that would cause us to hire our teaching assistant to be able to increase, or maybe that class physical space cannot take anymore students, and we have no place to open another section, then the students are directed to be enrolled in another building, the next closest building. So there's some standards. We also talked about, you know, don't keep people hanging. One of the lessons learned is that we're going to be clear in the plan. So as we look at this, and as I talk about our next steps, that was, that's the objective. Again, impact on walkers. What real-time data do we need to inform this, this work? Our current boundaries, which I just shared, and I would also mention that those maps currently sit on our district website under walking routes because they provide our families with, like, recommended walking routes based on where crossing guards are. And that's where those, that map came from. Are there ways to look at, we're English as a new language in special education services, is this a good opportunity to perhaps be more efficient in that? Currently, we have three elementary schools that serve ENL students, one at Wilson, one at Roosevelt, and one at Franklin. And then when they turn, go into sixth grade, they all go to East. Well, that means Roosevelt kids get to go with their peers, and Franklin students get to go with their peers, but not Wilson. And same thing with Center City, MacArthur. Those students, they go to MacArthur, but after fifth grade, they go over to East while the rest of the school, their peers go to West. So there is an opportunity to make, to right-size those kinds of things, so students are flowing more easily. And also, what's the financial impact of, of doing something like this? So, what are some next steps, taking those into consideration? One recommendation that we've shared, talked about is to start off with getting some input on what we should be taking into consideration. So here are some dates with, that I've worked with the building principals to identify locations. The communications around this will go out tomorrow morning. There's a hard letter, copy letter going out to everyone in our community, not our parents, but also our taxpayers, so that they're aware that we're engaging in this work. We'll be communicating also this through email push, email pushes, our push notifications, so if somebody downloads the app, and that's something to communicate, they'll get that some good information. 5:30 time works. We are securing babysitting, so if somebody does bring in children, they like them to be in a company room to, you know, be supported and supervised because we're accommodating that. And we'll have some late refreshments offered as well. But the purposes of these forums is, if I go back to this larger question, what should we be looking at? Here's some ideas, what are we missing? And the way that forums will work is I will share pretty much what I'm sharing now, again, for our community, to repeat, so you'll be able to recite this yourself, I'm sure, after we've done our tour of the set of buildings. And I'll put, end with this question. And then depending on the size of the group, we'll break out into small groups. Because board members will be present, and between two or three, I'll make a statement that sounds something like, you know, our board members are here to be active listeners and to ask questions, but not to weigh in on what a value set of what we should and should not be doing. It's really just to hear, to be, to be present, so that we can bring that information back to, to a board meeting for discussion. So that, that question, sorry, go backward. That question, when they send out the notification, there will also be a link. If you don't, someone chooses not to participate in any of those seven forums, they can go onto a survey where that question is asked and give their input. And it's called Pod Exchange, and other people can, you know, comment or, and write into that. I think that's a great idea, and put in their own ideas as well. And that will run all the way into the last week, or, I'm sorry, the second week of July. So we'll give that, let that run its course. And so if somebody comes to the community forums and asks what we need, we can say, hey, here's a QR code, you can, you can fill that out, and they can certainly, you know, write it down as well. We're also going to ask families in the communication that's going out that if they choose to come to one of them, if they could just let us know they plan on coming. It's not required to register, but it'll just help us plan. We have a certain number of people and a certain number of easels, and just want to see what people, want to support people the best that we can. It's the size of the room at the library, Calvin Coolidge, and, you know, for example, example large enough. So we're also committed to communicating, communication sent out to families with a summary of that input. So prior to the July 15th board meeting, there'll be another communication that will go out, and that community will, they thank you for your input. And here's a summary of the input of these, of the big ideas that individuals shared during that, those sessions with the community. We'll then have on our board agendas for July and August during our board meetings. And if it takes more board meetings, we can go continue. And if it takes more board meetings, we can go continue on, on that. Some discussion about that. When the, I have some preliminary data that I just showed you. Some more data to the July board meeting, we'll look at that. And they might generate more questions and more, more thoughts and ideas. But with the objective of seeing what kind of a plan we might be able to put together and have consensus to move, move forward on if one reveals itself, that we find, the board decides it's going to work. And after each board meeting, it will be important to then communicate a summary of that specific item that we discussed at the board. Okay, again. What we'll also do is we'll create a place on the website, the elementary attendance zones. We'll entitle that and all the communications will be posted there. So if someone does not get the communication, they can always go to our website and search elementary attendance zones and be able to, go to the website and see what those communications are saying. And then at the earliest, at the very earliest, September board meeting, there may be a conversation here that we may be ready in projecting the future. We don't know, to be had in September board meeting. Or the board will have a conversation about deciding if there's a particular plan. Again, I want to emphasize the reason for this timing is multi, multi-levels. One, as we've been looking at enrollment trends. And we now saw in the beginning slide, a match between where the direction that our student enrollment is going in. But also, we want to be able to communicate to the Roosevelt families, I would say by November ideally, where their children are going to go the following year to school. Because for some of those children, it may be that they're going to another school and that's where they're going to go moving forward and not even returning to Roosevelt once Roosevelt's built. Those would be the families I would think would be most impacted. We just want to make sure people are understanding that. Now, the changes in this, my recommendation to the board is we're going to do it, decide that there's going to be a shift of two lines, when that change is going to happen. It wouldn't be made prior to the 2027, 2028 school year. That's the target year for moving back into Roosevelt. But I'm a realist. Will everybody be walking through that door September 1st? I was supporting Macarthur's building in two different locations and coming back. That ended up looking like K through two coming in around the beginning of the year. And I forget which one was first and then second, it was three, five, first. And then K two coming in during the after-winter break. These teachers are moving those things in as well. So if it's a scaffold approach, then the board may say, you know, you're not going to go to the new school until the 28, 29 year, school year. Because I don't think you want people moving in the middle of the year after the, the acting out because students are going to have to leave the building in order for other students to move in. So I think earliest, it would be the 27, 28 school year. It might be the 28, 29 school year. So that gives people, I think, take this being 2025, you know, thinking in three years, you know, it's really impacting students where you've yet to come to school or you're in K one, two, having some potential of going to a different school. Again, it's the boundary lines. If you're living right next to an elementary school, I don't know that we'll make recommendations for making changes to, in that way. But it's all the chips and the impact. And again, along the way, any decision that's made, that I, what I would anticipate, we invested in a letter sent home to everyone about the start of the process. I would recommend that we send a letter home to everyone at the end of the process. So that people are aware of the decisions we made, what went into the decision and the outcome. So questions, that's it.
Thank you. A lot of planning went into this. Thank you. This is big work. We've never done this before. I guess the unknown variable, we've discussed this, and I know you know this, as you've been meeting with the mayor, this is likely to come up. Someone's going to say, well, what are, what are the municipal authorities planning to grow our city? Are they looking to bring more families in? You know, we talked about enrollment growth. And there is the, there's the mayor, there's city hall. I know you've talked to the mayor. Is that something, it's, it's an unknown variable, but it's going to come up. And I would recommend that either, I mean, I'm not saying we should invite the mayor. Is, is it, are they, should they be involved in this process? We're talking about our city and our school district.
Absolutely, absolutely. I think there are definitely sections of the city that we, I know I've had conversations just looking around the housing.
Yeah.
Up in Center City, what the enrollment, think about.
Right.
I don't have the number off the top of my head, but it's something like 50. Students actually live in this catchment area now, 50 students. And think about the number of students that used to fill this entire building. I think, was it K eight?
Yes.
Yeah, in buildings, so. But also look at the available and affordable and livable, I may use the word gently, homes that surround this building. So I know that I've asked, I've talked to the mayor about that. Does he have a, my target location, as you were just starting with, a certain number of streets and renovated homes? We look at Country Town right now, that's completely vacant. That has created a number of vacancies. However, our homeless population has increased. So it, I don't know the impact of the enrollment, right? If we have 358 students homeless that are coming to our schools, they truly don't have a home of their own to live in. It could easily fill Country Town. So, yeah, that's a really, that's a very important consideration. I think that's also why we need to be mindful of maintaining small class sizes of, of, you know, 16, 17, or 18, because that's going to be really important. And then we'll look at the capacity of a building. I'm certainly not suggesting that we take a building and then hold 400 students and fill it up to 400 students, right? I think there's, there may be some variability to them then to accommodate for that. But if the board, and certainly think about this, if there's a meeting where you'd like the mayor to attend, we can, we, or representatives, or have some kind of a, you know, a meeting to, to talk about this or share our findings in terms of particular buildings that have, whose enrollment has been the most impacted. So for example, there are buildings where they built MacArthur. And well, before we built that building, we had to do an enrollment study to, to say, this is the number of classrooms we need. And we did the enrollment study. And it's, it's fairly close to what was projected. Could it, could more students attend there than they could? But not in, you know, not another section of each grade level because all the classrooms are occupied.
Well, not an elementary person, you are, but is there an optimal class size for elementary schools in America? For high schools, it's 800. They recommend, Ted Seizer said that years ago. A high school should now receive 800 kids to be functional. Is there a number?
You know, I don't know if it ever come across, and I could certainly find that out. We can look into, I guess, Jennifer, I have to do some research on, is there an optimal number? We have discovered that, you know, our buildings, when they are teetering around 200 to 50, you know, 300 can support them, support themselves with a, with a single leader. Once they get 350, you know, 400, that we really need an assistant principal to help support those students. But what's also equally important is student needs in that building. So, you know, do you have, is there special education, two classes in there? Are there also E and L being supported there? Do you have a large number of students that are homeless that are needing those additional supports? Because that can impact attendance. And so now you have, as a building administrator, trying to address, address those needs to trauma, a lot of trauma. So I don't, I think it's, I'm going to guess it's probably dependent on demographics. I would think, the study didn't take that, took me on that question, but we can look into that.
Thank you.
I think to have a mayor, I mean, that, and that's hit me for a long time, but I feel like you keep putting it off. But our number of homeless students, I feel like having them come.
Yeah.
And maybe we need, like, as a board or as a task force, as a whatever. I know you've been doing so much work, but I feel like we need to be hopping the ante a little. Of these 350 kids need a place to live. And that's not only our responsibility, like, although nobody's been doing, you know, it's like, then the mayor needs to be, we need to put pressure on campus to feel as concerned. And then also for those kids to have a stable school to go to, which it does play into, you know, our redistricting for that. But I feel like that's a big deal and we need to maybe focus some kind of plan on that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we can certainly have more conversation about, is it a housing task force? Which this, you know, certainly there's a parallel and an act to this work. But I would agree with you that it has just, when the number is, when I think three years, three or four years ago, just right after COVID, 150. And now we're at 358, you can see, I mean, that's, that's, those are significant changes. And when you can see the evidence as you drive through the city, places that used to be occupied and now windows are being knocked down, you know that there's, somebody has a plan to do something, something, something with it. But I don't know, I do not believe, because I think it would have been shared publicly, that there's a master plan for starting in one section. And I know that he's talked about developing the arc walk, looking and focusing more on Clinton Street. And so for Clinton Street as a, as a retail and merchants, not necessarily in housing.
Yeah. Thank you.
You have any thoughts? All right. So our first step is going to be next Monday at Calvin Coolidge. As I mentioned, on 16th in the library, and then followed by the 17th, Jefferson and Roosevelt. We had to, based on the number of evening activities that are still happening in June, unfortunately, had to double book to make sure that we did this in a reasonable timeframe and didn't go into July where we know that families may, may go all the places for the summer, so. And then also next week, we have Horace Mann on the 18th. Okay? And again, board members in Central Office, so, thank you.
Thank you. Move on to new business superintendent's recommendations. First item will be the certified C resolutions. Could I have a motion, please, on resolution C one through C 11? It's moved by Shontae, seconded by Liza. Retirement to recognize, I'll read this one, resolution 2025-6-C2. Retirement Casey McHenry. Whereas Casey McHenry has served the Binghamton City School District as a business teacher from October 2014 to June of 2015, faithfully, continuously since September 4th, 2021, is a teacher of fine arts and rural languages, Spanish. Whereas Casey McHenry has submitted the intention to retire, effective at the end of the day, July 2nd, 2025. Now therefore be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education does and hereby accepts the request for retirement. And be further resolved that the Board of Education extends to Casey McHenry our sincere thanks and the thanks of the community for their efforts on behalf of the students of the district. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education extends our sincere best wishes for the, for a long, happy, and prosperous retirement. And can we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Middleton?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mrs. Button? Yes. Mr. Seaver's on?
Certified stipend, CS resolutions. Could I have a motion, please, on resolutions CS one and two? Moved by Albert, seconded by Carrie. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Middleton?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mrs. Button?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver's on?
Yes. Non-certified NC resolutions. Could I have a motion, please, on resolutions NC one through NC seven? Moved by Carrie, Shontae, seconded. I'll go ahead and read NC 2025-6-NC1. Whereas Mario Lisi has served the Binghamton City School District faithfully and continuously since November 1st, 1999, in the maintenance department. Whereas Mario Lisi has submitted his intention to retire, effective at the end of the day, June 15th, 2025. Carrie, could you please read all of NC two?
Retirement Crystal Papastra. Whereas Crystal Papastra has served the Binghamton City School District faithfully and continuously since September 2nd, 2003, as a teacher's aide. And whereas Crystal Papastra has submitted their intention to retire, effective at the end of the day, on June 30th, 2025. Now therefore be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education does and hereby accepts their request for retirement. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education extends to Crystal Papastra its sincere thanks and the thanks of the community for their efforts on behalf of the students of the district. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education extends to them its sincere and best wishes for a long, happy, and prosperous retirement.
Thank you. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Middleton?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mrs. Button?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver's on?
Yes. And general G resolutions. Could I have a motion, please, on resolutions G one through G 31? Moved by Liza, I'll go ahead and second. And one donation to recognize. Resolution 2025-6-G6 donation resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. The Board of Education accepts the monetary donation listed below, which is from the Evangelical Lutheran Church of the Redeemer in the amount of $1,672. Effectively, a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Middleton?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mrs. Button?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver's on?
Yes. And it takes us to updates from the superintendent.
Okay. So a couple of other recognitions. This Thursday evening is our Valsal dinner. I am in La Mirada, so that's exciting. There'll be, we have two different tables, one for our valvatory, one for surgery. And I also, I believe they'll be here, the valvatory for BOCs this year is at Binghamton Street. So I meant to circle back to Michelle and say, can Binghamton representative that table too? Because that would be painful. And maybe both, I think it's up with the BOCs who sits there. We'll have to bring, I'll bring them over to the tables and introduce. Also, we are extending for the first time, like, very transparently, overtly, any student who would have been part of this cohort but chose to go the GED route to, to walk during graduation. So we have three students that are going to be participating, which is what they were, were tapping down. And I want to give kudos to Mary and your pen. We're really connected with some of these students and they've asked a question. And so we put a process in place to ensure that they can attend and be supportive. So I'm excited about that. I'm also excited to be bringing back to the school district. It's been a couple of years since they've had a wellness day. And so with Jennifer's amazing skill of managing, okay, we have how many days' time at the end of the year? And how do we engage 1,211 people across the district? And they'll see that, that schedule of events, just giving me the eye. The schedule of events next Friday. Probably the only person who can do it because I've done that work. I know fully what that means, but you really have done an incredible job. So we put out to our faculty who's interested in facilitating wellness sessions. So anything from walking, cooking, anything else you want to highlight?
Yeah, yoga.
Yoga.
Kracking.
Play fishing. So kracks, what? Are you going to come play fishing?
Yeah.
That would be awesome. But behind MacArthur School, maybe.
Yeah.
That would have been awesome. But it's going to help for our faculty to really have half the day of focusing on self, you know, self-care, which is, which is so, so important. And so excited, excited to do that. And then the last piece of information I just wanted to share is that this Friday at Calvin Coolidge, I think it's at 4 o'clock, we're having our first elementary piano recital. I'm excited, I think we had a music teacher who asked if she could part of enrichment activities after school, offer some piano lessons to some fifth grade students. She limited to kind of that, that cohort and had, I think, five or six takers. And if I think about that and the access that many of us to, we have other ones, it's just tremendous. And so Jen, I'm tying, but just thrilled with her. And so she's invited me to, I may have mentioned to her that I was trying to take piano, and she wanted me to be part of the recital, but I hadn't laid out because my hot crust wants a snack, good order to, you know, to do. I, Jennifer, the musician to my left who's done that, maybe next year. But I just want to mention that a little bit because it just warms my heart. When our faculty is there to go over the end and put that idea out there and results in something so special, so that's why I'm.
Thank you.